Good evening, everybody. Hello, Tukahoe. Hello. Welcome. I am Deputy Mayor Kara Cronin, and this is the reorganization meeting and regular business meeting for the Tukahoe Board of Trustees on December 11, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Tukahoe Girl Scout Troop 2462. Thank you, girls. Today, we have a special treat. The National Anthem will be sung by BSA Troop 19's Renee Arana. Everyone, please stand. Sorry. Thank you, Renee. That is not an easy song. Thank you, Renee, for doing such a wonderful job. So now, we will have the swearing in of Mayor Omira Andino for a term of two years by Tukahoe Village Judge Fuller.
Now, we will have the swearing in of Trustee Josh Gachion. If you could come forward. And can we have Danny Lang, please come forward to be sworn in? So now, we will actually, I think I'm going to go ahead and, Camille, bear with me. Just want to move ahead so that we can vote and swear in Judge O'Toole as well at once, since you're here. Judge, if you don't mind. So just wait for Trustee Lang to have a seat. And I'm just going to go out of order a little bit here. I'd like to move to the appointment number three of our Associate Village Justice. We'll do it after. Michael O'Toole for a term of one year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Can we have Judge O'Toole come forward to be sworn in?
I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of Associate Village Justice of the Village of Tukahoe. And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
Judge O'Toole, if you'd like to say a few words first, we'd like to reserve that spot for you.
Thank you. I should have that memorized by now. This is the 33rd time I've gone through that oath. Once a year, or a year and a half now, since we changed the times. I'd like to thank the mayor and the board for renewing their faith in me doing my job here as Associate Village Justice for the Village of Tukahoe. It's been a very rewarding experience. I'd like to thank David, who, you know, I've watched him do it for many years, since he's been here even longer than I have. I'd like to thank our clerks, who work so hard to help us do our jobs here in the Village of Tukahoe County, and Kara, and even Maureen Stevens has come back to help us during her retirement. And they do a great job. We've got updated. They've helped us update our facilities and our record-keeping and our new technology. So we're moving well ahead. So once again, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I'll reserve this time for remarks from the community first, and then from the board. If there's anyone who would like to come forward? Okay? Sure?
Hi, my name is Jeff Suckerman. I live at 24 Bronx Street. I just wanted to congratulate everyone who's got elected, and I have something I want to say. I don't know, is Daryl here? There he is. So Daryl Taylor, I just need to say this. And no offense to anyone who got elected with him, but Daryl Taylor got 700 votes, and he wasn't on Row A. And I just want to say, don't take offense, Josh, but he would have had well over 1,000 votes. I mean, it's hard to imagine that he wasn't on the top line and got that. So we tried to convince many, many citizens to vote for him on another row somewhere nowhere near there, and he managed 700 votes. So congratulations, Daryl. I'd hate to run against you next time you run. That's for sure. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, former trustee, as of today, tonight, I would say. But regardless of the election, I'm fine. And I want everybody who supported me in the election to know that I'm fine. I spent my lifetime in this village, helping people and doing work in this village, pretty much was what I was doing on the board, and I will continue that even when I'm not on the board. But I will be running again soon. And I just want to congratulate Mayor Andino for being re-elected. I think the numbers show that most of our residents in this village think that you were the right candidate, that you are leading this village in the right direction. And we look forward to the next two years. Congratulations to Josh. Most, probably everybody knows, but Josh is a veteran who served, I believe, in Afghanistan and Iraq. And he's an educator. In the last nine months that Josh has spent on the board, he's doing an excellent job. We have all the confidence in the world that you will continue to do the work that we elected you to do. And congratulations to trustee Danny Lang for being elected again, and hope that you do a job that you were elected to do. And I just want to say thank you for everyone who's supported me the last couple of years in the election. But I'm fine. I will be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make any comments? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak at this time? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I will have comments from the board now. Would you like to start, trustee Lang?
Yes, please. First and foremost, good evening to all of our village residents, Mayor Andino, and my fellow village trustees. I would like to begin by thanking my wife Jennifer and my four boys, Daniel, Dylan, Declan, and Donovan, always supporting me. These elections aren't easy, and I truly appreciate the unwavering support. A big thank you to our campaign volunteers, friends, and family that helped make our election win possible. I'd also like to thank Joseph Scooter Scott and Claudia de Mayo Francis. They came up a little short this year, but have made huge contributions expressing their thoughts and visions for this great village. For those of you who may not know me, I am a married father of four wonderful boys. My sons have either went through the Tukahoe Elementary School system or are currently going through the system. I myself am a Pearl graduate of Tukahoe High School. We live in a home purchased by my grandparents over 90 years ago, and this will be my 41st year living in this wonderful village. I look forward to working with the mayor and village board to ensure the village reaches its highest potential. First and foremost, I will advocate the board to bring back and restore the hometown hero banners to honor our veterans. I am extremely grateful to the residents of the Village of Tukahoe for voting for me. I really appreciate the overwhelming vote of confidence I received, and I look forward to working as hard as I possibly can do. I'm sorry. I look forward to working as hard as I possibly can to do my part in making Tukahoe an even better place to live and work. Over the past several months, I've had the opportunity and privilege of meeting so many of our residents while going door-to-door and at various events. I look forward to meeting many more in the coming months and sharing thoughts and ideas on how to improve our great village. I want the public to know that I'm very accessible, and I can be reached by way of cellphone anytime. For those of you who have a pen, my number is 914-261-4806. Call me anytime. I will make myself available to meet with anyone who wants to discuss local village issues. Thank you again. I do my very best to serve this village well. And lastly, just a couple of notices. I just want to say beware of around this time of year, there are lots of scammers. There are construction scammers that are taking money from all folks and just not simply showing up. So it's something that we need to keep an eye on, as well as Con Edison scammers. There are Con Edison people that are impersonating themselves as Con Edison out there. Another thing, the Snow Angels. We need people to sign up as an angel, or if you need help, please, snowangels@yahoo.com. December 13, there will be a gelt drop at Memorial Park in Eastchester, 6:00 p.m., in honor of Hanukkah. And lastly, the commissioner's vote will be tomorrow at Marble Hall from 2:00 to 9:00. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Gachion.
Thank you, mayor. Nine months ago, I was appointed to the board, and I made a promise to Tukahoe that I would do everything I could to earn their vote in November. I want to take a minute to thank everyone who put their trust and faith in me, all the volunteers who helped make it happen, and of course, my beautiful wife, who's at home. Hi, Carmella. She's probably watching and saying hi. Tukahoe, you'll continue to get my very best. And before, you know, I sign off here, I can't say enough about my gratitude for trustee Daryl Taylor, who's been like a big brother to me since I've got up here. He's helped with everything that I've done since I've been here. So thank you, Daryl. Back to governing now. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Deputy Mayor, do you want to?
Elections are hard. They're hard. They're important, and we do this because it is our civic right and duty to go out and vote and choose our leaders. Democracy is precious, partially because it's difficult. We expect a lot from our leaders, and to run for public office is a vulnerable, kind of scary thing. So people who do it, I am always impressed by people who put themselves out there, who will make themselves vulnerable, who will be brave, who will tell people who they are and show people what they believe. And so I commend those who do just that, who show people who they are and tell people what they believe. I want to thank the candidates. I do want to thank Daryl Taylor. I want to thank him for running and for being gracious right here and right now. Congratulations to the winners. It'll be a pleasure to work with everybody, and I look forward to the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Deputy Mayor. And I think I'd just like to reiterate what the deputy mayor said, that democracy is precious, and that every time you vote, you lift democracy. And I also realize how much of a challenge it is to run for office. When I first ran, I was terrified and was trembling at every turn. So I understand exactly what it takes to run and to be vulnerable and to have comments made that maybe you believe aren't true, that are said about you. And I just want to thank all of the candidates who ran. Scooter Scott, who ran for mayor. Claudia de Mayo, who's here tonight, for running for the first time as well. Trustee Lang and my running mates, whom work so hard for this village, are extremely competent and have added so much value to Tukahoe. Trustee Gachion and Daryl Taylor. Daryl, in particular, it was a bit of a heartbreak for me, because I watched him for two years give of his heart and his soul to this village, and I have so much respect for him, his graciousness, his faith in God, you know, how he just cares about people, and no matter what, he shows grace to others. So I just want to make sure that we, as a board, use him as the example for how we should conduct ourselves, because you have really shown me what it is to be a man of God, Daryl. So thank you very much. So having said that, unless there's anyone else? Yep?
So just like the mayor said, so it's two years that everybody's been seeing what Daryl's been doing. But the reality of it is, Daryl's been doing this his entire life, folks. Anybody out here that knows Daryl, he might be on a stage for the last two years, but the reality of it, he's been serving this village for quite a long time, and I know that personally. Thank you, Daryl, for your service.
Okay, so having said that, it's time to govern. Camille, would you please call the roll?
Present.
Present.
Present, and trustee Nicole Engelbert had to be away on business today, and that's why she is not here. So I will begin with the first set of appointments. We've been talking a lot about the Comprehensive Plan, and I am grateful for our former deputy mayor, Dr. Renee Howell, who has agreed to chair the Comprehensive Plan Committee. I would like to make the appointments tonight, and if you are here and you have been appointed to this committee, I'd like to ask you to please stand, and you're welcome to say a few words. So first, the appointments are Chair Renee Howell, and I will state all of them, and then I'll ask for a motion. Sandra Reyes-Guerra, Brian Piancentino, sorry, Valen Nixie, sorry, Lois McCary, Shannon McDonough, Kristen Stone, and Daryl Taylor. Would you please all stand if you are serving on the Comprehensive Plan Committee? And thank you very much for serving. We appreciate it. Right now, you may sit. If you'd like to come forward, I know the Chair Renee Howell would come forward and say a few words, and as she comes up, I just want to give the public an idea of where we are in the process. So we've chosen the Comprehensive Plan Committee members. We have received four responses to our RFP, so we have four bids that the committee will take a look at and make a recommendation to this board to begin the process of who will help support us in executing our comprehensive plan. So Chair Person Howell, come forward. And thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just wanted to make a few comments as we engage in this process. It's really a very important process for any municipality to engage in. It's the plan that, you know, where the community decides how we'd like to develop things in Tukahoe. It's our land use policy, and it's also a vision for the future and for what our goals are as a community. It'll cover things like housing, recreation, transportation, our history, you know, and the general look and feel of the village. We need this plan, which will be aligned with our zoning law, so that we can amend and adopt zoning law. And they really serve also as a way to protect ourselves. It's a legal document, and, you know, it can be used to defend our law. Communities that don't have one or don't have up-to-date ones, you're left with defending yourself legally, and Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, with the entire case history that might be available to you. So it's really an important document for the village to have. I just wanted folks to know that there are some operating principles here. We must hold public meetings. This process falls under public meeting process. So by law, New York State, we're required to have them. We're going to try to be as transparent as possible with communicating when we will have public input for the process. We'll have a website, and we'll be placing as many documents as possible on that for people to review and come to meetings as prepared as they can. We'll be working with the board to update them on the process on a regular basis. We'll do that through the working meetings, as we did last Thursday. So attendance at the board working meetings is really important. As the mayor said, we'll be, you know, the first job will be to select one of the companies that will help guide and do the administrative process for the Comprehensive Plan. So as we looked at the people on the committee, we really tried to get a wide expertise. We have people who are landscape artists, people who know real estate, people who are in local business, people who are in marketing. And, you know, while we have a lot of expertise, there was one comment that I heard going around. I wanted to make sure people understood. There was kind of an idea put out there that we could just do this by ourselves. We have the talent in-house to do it. And, you know, I wanted to say to people that that's a bit short-sighted view. There's a lot that goes into doing a comprehensive plan, and what these companies that we're going to assess can do for us is they have a lot of knowledge. They've walked other communities through this process, many villages, many big cities, so they understand a lot of what's, you know, what works, what doesn't work, and they can give us, you know, we have that benefit. In addition, we don't want, we can't, you know, put that administrative piece on the committee who's volunteered their time. We want them to be free to really think and do research, and our village staff can't do that either. So this company will serve in that capacity as well. So really important to get, you know, an outside company to do this and not just put all of the burden on the village. Just as, you know, a quick example of differences in how local communities have used comprehensive plans, I think you can see three very different strategies from just the town of Eastchester, right? You have Bronxville, which has always had a really good comprehensive plan, very good at updating it, and you can see, they have a very clear business district, they have a distinct focus for recreation in their village, and have put a lot of effort into it. So that helps attract businesses. That helps attract people to the community. Where at Tukahoe, we have, you know, a little bit of a different focus. We have two distinct business districts. We have a big focus on smaller park regions, but, you know, what we're engaging in this Comprehensive Plan is a way to tie together some elements that we haven't yet had an opportunity to do. And then finally, the town of Eastchester, which has had a much more loose approach, right? There's no distinct downtown, there's no distinct necessarily government area, there's not, you know, they have a lot of schools in their jurisdiction, so it's a very different feel. And all three are very, you know, appropriate ways to look at your community, but it really has to be what the community wants. So I just wanted to, you know, give those as examples of what's possible with a Comprehensive Plan. And the time that we're engaging in this right now is really, you know, there's a big advantage, because we have now the knowledge of what life is going to be post-COVID with, you know, more remote work, and we can incorporate those kind of elements into the Comprehensive Plan. And of course, I think a big one for the residents is the environmental challenges we have now with climate change and the flooding that we've experienced as a community. So I wanted to really encourage the community in advance to participate in this process. When we have open meetings, we really need people to be there. I want to thank the committee members who have volunteered their time and effort. It's a big commitment. This will likely take the course of a year to complete. And I, of course, wanted to thank our administration and the board for all their help getting us here. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this will take us through the rest of the appointments. So for the board... Sorry. Oh, okay. So the appointed members that I've mentioned for the Village Comprehensive Plan Committee, I may have a motion to accept those appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thanks, Camille. What would I do without you? So second appointment, I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Kara Cronin as deputy mayor for one year. Village Administrator David Burke for one year. Receiver of taxes, Camille De Salvo for one year. Jackie Ferretti, deputy clerk, for one year. Village Treasurer Ryan Ruetta for two years. The Assessor, Michelle Licio for one year. Village Attorney Gary Gertson for one-year term. Village Historian Nick Zanzano, who will give us a little presentation shortly, for one year. Register of Vital Statistics, the Eastchester Town Clerk, for a year. Adolfo Ruetta for the Assessment Review Board, five-year term. Antonio Leo of the Planning Board, and Tom Ringwald, both for one year for the Planning and Zoning Boards. And Eileen Pierro, who is a new ad hoc member, is Eileen here. And Eileen Piero, who is a new ad hoc member. Is Eileen here? She's not here. She, I'm asking for an appointment to the Zoning Board, an ad hoc member of one year. Laura Rafiani for a one-year term for the Sign and Awning as Chairperson. Barbara Niemanan for a three-year term as the Sign and Awning Board Person. Committee Member. Ginger Crosby, a five-year appointment for the Library Board. And Jenny Steinhagen, Chairperson for one year for the Historic Preservation Commission and Chairperson. And also the Historic Preservation Commission, Ladislo Castellanos, for a five-year term. May I have a motion for all of these appointments?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Thank you all for serving. I think this village has around 50, between 50 and 60 volunteers who give up their time and their talent without getting paid. And many people have been doing it for decades, literally. So it's really important that we have members in the community to begin to step up and want to contribute to the life of this community because it has given so much to us. So thank you to all of the volunteers. We appreciate you. We will soon be having a holiday dinner to celebrate and to thank the volunteers of the community, as well as our staff members who give so much to the village as well. So thank you all. So this will take us to Nick Zanzano's presentation. And if the Girl Scouts need to get home because you have to go to bed for school, you might want to do it now. I see you looking for that little window. Thank you, girls.
Alrighty. I'm Nick Zanzano, Tuckahoe Village Historian. Tonight's program, we're going to do the Tuckahoe Marble Industry. And what I want people to know, Tuckahoe was considered the marble capital of the world. Our marble was probably the best that could be found. And when you see the buildings that were utilizing our marble, it really puts a crown on Tuckahoe. Now, we can go to the first page. First, we'll start with the Marble Schoolhouse. That was made with Tuckahoe marble back in 1835. Next. The Immaculate Conception Church was also built with Tuckahoe marble. And it was built by local labor. People volunteered their time to build the church. Next. Lo and behold, the Assumption Church in Tuckahoe, also built with Tuckahoe marble. And it was all volunteer labor by resident families that built it. Next. Union Baptist Church was built in Duruchell, and it's all Tuckahoe marble. Tuckahoe marble was the whitest. It was most durable. It was a fireproof element that could be used in the construction. So it was very popular all over. Next. Here's our Samuel Fee Building. And it's right on Main Street. That was built with Tuckahoe marble. Next. Wow, St. Patrick's Cathedral. What a crowning jewel for Tuckahoe. Tuckahoe marble is utilized on this whole structure, and I think it's quite amazing. And it's hard to believe, from Marbledale Road, all this marble came. And it's just unbelievable. You'll see it in the next buildings. Here's the Stewart Marble Palace. This was one of the biggest department stores in Manhattan, and it's all Tuckahoe marble. And A.T. Stewart, the owner of the Marble Palace, lived in Tuckahoe, and he was also a quarry owner. Next. The Washington Arch in Washington Square was built with Tuckahoe marble. Next. Here's the Mutual Life Building. When you look at the size of these buildings, the immense amount of marble that had to come out of it, I think it's just unbelievable. Next. Here's the United States Capitol. After the War of 1812, the British pretty much destroyed Washington, DC. It took about 20 years for them to start to rebuild. And the east and west wing of the Capitol is all built with Tuckahoe marble. Next. The Washington Monument was partially built. And after the War of 1812, it needed a lot of refurbishing. And it was built utilizing Tuckahoe marble. Next. The United States Naval Observatory, Washington, DC. It's all built with Tuckahoe marble. Next. Okay, now we're going to Newport, Rhode Island. If you've never been to Newport to see the mansions, you have to see Marble House. Marble House was built with Tuckahoe marble because of the pure white feature of it and the durability. The exterior of the building was done primarily with Tuckahoe marble. The interior was done with Italian Carrera marble because of the beautiful colors. It doesn't weather well, so it was utilized for the interior of the house. Next. Here's Soldier Field in Chicago. You could see all the columns in the background. That's a huge, huge construction project, just that piece. Now we'll look at the next photo. And you could see on three sides of Soldier Field, we have all the columns. All these columns were built in Tuckahoe with our Tuckahoe marble, with Tuckahoe artisans. And what a phenomenal industry. Next. Here's the American Wing of the Metropolitan Museum. Excuse me. This was all, this was done with Tuckahoe marble. And if you could see the way the peak is in the center with the columns, that was all Greek Revival architecture that was done. And you could see it on, you'll see it on this building and the next photo. Here's Borough Hall in Brooklyn. The same Greek Revival architecture was done. This is all Tuckahoe marble. Next. The Custom House on Wall Street. This was all done with Tuckahoe marble. Thank you, Mayor. This was all done with Tuckahoe marble. Next. Here's the New Orleans City Hall. Again, you could see the commonality in the construction with the Greek Revival style that was done. Next. Here's the Hotel Vendone in Boston. The immensity of this building, all this marble came out of Tuckahoe. It's amazing, and how it got there. They would literally take the marble from the quarries. They used oxen and drays. They brought the marble up to Post Road, brought it to Mount Vernon, got it on barges, and sent it up the east coast to Boston. Tremendous task. Next. Okay, I wanted to deviate a little from some of the buildings. The later years of the marble industry, they utilized the scrap marble, and they heated it up in kilns. They pulverized it into a powder or a dust. And they used it, they mixed it with sulfuric acid, and they made carbonic acid to make carbonation. And then Tuckahoe was in the beverage industry. Next. John Frazer, we have pictures in the back of the room. But John Frazer was an American sculptor. Him and his brother both owned one of the quarries on Marbledale Road for, I think, three or four years. And they found that, let's get out of the marble industry. And John Frazer, he's an accomplished American sculptor. He's one of our own, and this is what he pursued at this stage. And there's a lot more, a lot more buildings, but I'm going to cut it short. One last statement. If anybody finds the Tuckahoe history interesting, join us on a Wednesday. We're looking for more volunteers. We don't pay well, but we have a lot of work for you. If you're interested, come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nick. Thank you very much, Nick. We look forward to your upcoming "history moments," I call them, with Nick Zanzano. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the November 6, 2023, meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So that's going to move us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there's anyone that would like to address the board on any agenda items, you may do so now. Oh, okay, I thought she was going to address the board. Psych. Okay, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to address the board on any agenda items? No? Okay, so we will move on to resolutions. First resolution, authorizing the readoption of the procurement policy on file with the village clerk. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution number two, adopting the standard mileage reimbursement rate as set forth by IRS.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution number three, adopting the attached calendar of Board of Trustees meetings. If you need to see what the calendar of Board of Trustees meetings, you can go on the website and look at the calendar, and you can pick up all of the meetings. Board of Trustees meetings, zoning, planning, the historic preservation, and all other meetings. You can find it on the website. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And may I have a motion adopting the banks to do banking with in the village of Tuckahoe? Webster Bank, Chase, and Wells Fargo.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? May I also have a motion adopting the Eastchester Review as the official paper of the village?
So moved.
Anyone second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I'm going to ask the chief to come forward for the resolution number six, approving an agreement with the Westchester County for installation of an antenna and radio for inter-agency communication. If you could explain that a bit, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the board, congratulations to everybody. This is a radio that we received with an agreement with Westchester County. Again, it's an example of our commitment for cost savings, working with other agencies. This radio costs zero to the village. It's a multi-band inter-agency radio, and we use it during emergency situations when other agencies or other emergency situations throughout the county exist where we would need to speak to each other via radio on top of a cell phone backup communication. So this is something where it's great to work with Westchester County, and we're happy to take it. And the antenna is only 39 inches tall, so it's going to sit right on the chimney and give us years to come of great cost-free service to the village.
Thanks, Chief. I know that caught you off guard a bit. You didn't know you were a celebrity, huh? Okay, may I have a motion approving that agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And also, may I ask for a motion authorizing an MOU with Westchester County for remote access to County Clerk's Westchester records online?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and can we pay the bills? So may I ask a motion authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $86,644.41?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We do have an add-on, and this is up for discussion. So last year, we provided free parking during the holidays, moving up, you know, up to Christmas Day. And so we are looking to do that again this year. So I'd like the board to weigh in. The proposal has come before us to have free parking from Thursday, December 21st through December 25th. Last year, we had a few more days, so I'd like to hear from the board and ask what your guys' thoughts on before we make a motion and vote. Anybody have any thoughts on how many days or no free parking, free parking? Anybody want to weigh in first?
Sure. So ultimately, it's Thursday, it'll be Thursday and Friday, two weekdays, and then the weekend?
Yes, and Saturday. Because Thanksgiving, Christmas is on Monday, so it would be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, free parking. Last year, we did Saturday to Saturday. Saturday the 16th, it would be Saturday the 16th to Saturday the 20...
Perhaps we should give Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday as well, just a thought.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts about...
Yeah, I think trustee Lang has a good point here, that increased foot traffic wouldn't hurt, certainly. It would help our businesses down there. So if we wanted to do a week, I would be in favor of that as well. I'm certainly in favor of the four days that we're suggesting.
The three days, you mean, the Thursday, Friday, Saturday? Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I feel like we've done well with parking this year because of increased parking meter rates. And so if we could give a little gift to the village, it would be a nice gesture. And so I would be in favor, definitely, of the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but I would be in favor of going Saturday to Saturday.
Okay. And if we think about just what are the pros and cons, you know, the pros are obvious. You know, there's, no one has to worry about putting quarters in the meters or going into Pango. On the other side, we've heard from members of the community and even the police department that say the people who benefit from those free parkings often tends to be the employees of the businesses because they're like, let's capitalize on this while we can. So there are some pros and cons to it. I'd like to hear from the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate, this would be in the business district.
Only in the business district, right?
So long-term parking will still be a revenue source for the village during this time. We would also be enforcing overtime parking in the residential area during the week as well. So it's more in the business district for the storefronts to benefit. Also, we will be enforcing to our limit in the area of the storefronts. You would only be able to park, usually that's what we've done each year. You can't park for more than two hours, and we would mark the cars and make sure that they're not there all day.
Okay, all right.
And that would be only on Main Street?
The business district.
The business district, right, and then on the other, right?
Yeah. Okay. So anyone want to weigh in? Do you want to weigh in, Gary, David? No? Would anyone from the community like to weigh in? Would anyone from the community like to weigh in? Is an opportunity?
May I do, so you guys talked about Saturday to Saturday. May I just?
Sure.
I'm always the Grinch when it comes to this. You guys know and the board knows it, it's a little bit of a joke and it, a lot of times, we do think it's counterproductive. While people think that it's free parking, a lot of members take advantage of it and they're not getting the turnover. A lot of people stay there longer than the two hours. And while the chief did explain, he goes out there and chocks tires, it is difficult and labor-intensive. So you will see people that take advantage of it and you don't get the turnover. So that's my, my first. And then just second, you're talking about Saturday to Saturday, maybe it should be from Monday to Saturday, just that, that one week prior. But again, policy decision, my two cents.
Thank you.
Can we limit it to one hour? Especially two hours?
No, no, it doesn't. Yeah, that would be even more intensive for, for the police department. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Scott, 10 Circle Road. And I'm in favor of going Saturday to Saturday, which is something of course I'd be bandied about in the campaign. But while I'm up here, congratulations to all of you. Yes, there are pros and cons, but I think in the spirit of the holiday season, we should focus on the pros. And it's a gift to our businesses, a gift to our residents. It's an invitation for people outside of Tuckahoe to come in and shop. I think the pros outweigh the cons. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it seems like the majority of the board seems okay with Monday through Saturday. So why don't we, why don't I ask for a motion authorizing free short-term parking in the business districts of the village from Monday, the 18th, December 18th through Saturday, December 23rd. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Trustee Lang, I didn't hear if you were...
No, I said I was just a little quiet, I apologize.
All right, so we will have our free short-term parking in the business districts from Monday through Saturday. Deputy Mayor?
Can we just get clarification on what the business district is? Because last year, we had some people confused on like Midland Place. There are, there are meters there, that doesn't count, right? So what exactly would the business districts be?
So the business districts would be anywhere where there's short-term meter parking, in Depot Square, on Main Street, all along Main Street Corridor, in Crestwood as well, and also on Fisher Avenue.
So on Columbus and on Fisher?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also sections of Columbus Avenue by Underhill.
Right, but not, not Columbus between Main and Fisher?
Columbus between Main and Fisher.
Right, like going down 100, that's what I'm saying. So when you said Columbus.
Between Fisher and Lincoln.
Right. Okay, thanks, chief. All right, this is gonna take us to departmental reports. You may as well stay up here, chief. Sorry. Thank you all.
So I'm gonna start off tonight by reminding the residents of the winter parking regulations. So December 1st, we started issuing warning summonses to notify residents in the business district that park overnight. You cannot park on the business district streets from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM. So the first five days, we issued warning summonses and now we are in full effect of enforcing it. Residents also noticed that we are flipping the street sign, street cleaning signs throughout the village and on these streets with the snow zone regulations, we're putting the snow zone signs up. The snow zone signs are being placed and I want everyone to know that we go out and enforce the snow zones once it starts snowing and once the plow trucks and the DPW trucks are out. These are large pieces of equipment, they have multiple pieces of attachments to them. And the reason we have this is for safety and the ability to give the DPW the, the ability to clean the roads quicker in a safe manner. And that is in effect until 12 hours after the snowfall stops. The library lot has been closed, as everyone can see. So overnight parking, we place signs, are in the community center lot on the South Curve for residents in the area that used to park in the library during the winter, three to six regulations. So we had posted signs in 100 Columbus and 50 Columbus notifying the residents of that. Crosswalk enforcement, we conducted heavily in November and we will continue to do so in an active matter. We are seeing this over and over again, vehicles not yielding to pedestrians in crosswalks. So we will be out there campaigning and letting motorists know and also stopping vehicles of violation, violations in the crosswalk of pedestrians that are trying to cross. Also, a reminder, the village speed limit is 25 miles an hour throughout the village and in certain sections, 15, where it's adjacent schools. This November 14th, we sent six officers to a health and wellness summit in Peekskill for a whole day of training of regarding mental health and wellness. It was, it was a great inspirational event and the officers really enjoyed it. And now for my crime tip of the month. Okay, if you go away for the holiday season for several days this year, have a friend or a neighbor pick up your mail and Amazon packages. By doing so, this will be a deterrent in people canvassing the area to look for mail or packages that are outside your door. Also, add a smart switch to your house. It's a very easy switch, you plug it in the wall, download the app and you can control your lighting inside the house. You can turn it on and off through your phone and easily adjust the times that you want it on or off. You have these in the local hardware store and also online, easily accessible. And it's such a small tool that works and it's very effective. Lastly, I just wanna wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season here. Be careful out there, COVID is really strong, it's a very strong strain now. Everybody's getting sick, we're seeing the numbers coming up, so just use caution. Enjoy the holiday season, happy and healthy, safe season.
Thank you, thank you, chief. We have DPW superintendent Frank DiMarco.
I was standing and prepared just in case you had to call me back. Congratulations, Mayor, Dino, Danny and Josh.
Thank you.
I just wanna update everybody on two projects that we have going on in the village. The first is on Grant Street and that's where Conradusen is upgrading all the gas mains and gas services in that area. And they should be there for another month or so because they are, they are expediting this, this project pretty quickly. So I'm hoping that it'll be there not too much longer. Residents always ask me, how does Conradusen choose to come into our area? How I gauge it is every road we pave, they obviously come in afterwards and tear it back up again. So I don't know. I, what they do is they pick roads that have a tremendous amount of gas leaks that become very dangerous. A lot of our underground infrastructure is well over 100 years old, including all water, our gas and our sewer systems. So if Conradusen wants to come in and replace gas mains and make it safe for all the residents, I tell them to go ahead. So please, you wanna call me and yell at me, go right ahead, I'm ready for you. But I do, I do look to make all these areas safe. The second project we got going on is a sewer replacement on Midland Place. It just started about a week ago. So I know there's a lot of construction going on there, there's a lot of pipes and equipment and material being stored to the side. We're trying to accommodate this contractor so they could expedite this project quickly as well. We have about a 500-foot run of sewer replacement that needs to be taken care of. Over the years, we've always been inundated with rain and sewer and the line just needed to be replaced and we were looking to expedite that real quick. This project is CDBG and ourselves. CDBG helped us finance, I think, half of the project, which is grant funding that David had worked on. And that, hopefully, we expedite that within a six-week period to two months. I'm doing my best to help expedite it as quickly as possible. Next, I wanna talk about leaves. People ask me when we're gonna come around and pick up leaves. Leaf pickup is over. It's over, we were over the 1st of December, but we are continuing to vacuum leaves until the end of this week. So please, after this week, do not place any more leaves out there. If you're gonna place it, place it in recyclable bags or open containers. We do come around on Thursday to pick up yard waste and leaves, still until after Christmas, even after New Year's. So please, no more leaf piles, they should be out no longer than this week. DPW has a toy drive every year and we do that for local boys and girls. The deadline for that is December 19th. So please, if you're gonna drop off toys, no used toys, they still have to be packaged, make sure they're, they're new and not used. You could drop them off at the DPW facility at 15 Marble Dell Road. It's always a big turnout every year, so please, help you give to those who need it. And that's all I really have to say, but happy holidays to everybody, happy and safe holiday.
Thank you, Frank.
See you next year.
Thank you. Swadish, library director, who I'm sure is exhausted right now?
I don't think so.
Glad to hear.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor, trustee and the community. Now you can see I said good morning, right? First of all, congratulations, Mayor and Dino, trustee Josh Gachon and trustee Danny Lang. As all of you know, that Tuckahoe Library is going under renovation project, which started on Monday, December 4th. And in the meantime, library is getting ready to open for the public, a new location at the Tuckahoe Community Center. And we are all looking forward to welcoming you at the new location. So I, we were planning, but it's getting a little delay and hopefully you will check our newsletter and we will be able to open. I can't give you the exact date, hopefully next week. Also, I want to say, the new library will be a welcoming and modern space that will offer a range of amenities and resources, including state-of-the-art technology, comfortable reading and gathering spaces that are bright, energy-efficient, efficient and ADA accessible. And thanks to the general support of New York State, Westchester County, the village of Tuckahoe, grants from various public organization and private donations. And also, I'm very thankful to the library board, village board, village administrator and our wonderful library and very hard-working staff, Tuckahoe Police Department and DPW Department. Without them, I don't think it was possible to do all this big project. And some of our programs, what we are still trying to offer, which is online, so please check our website. And if you have any question, give us, email us. I don't think you want to call us because we don't have our phone system ready yet. So please email us or check our website at www.thackahoe.com/library with any question and please let us know. And also, I want to wish everyone a very happy holidays and prosperous New Year. I don't have a calendar because we, as I said, we have few things on and off we are offering.
Swadish, I think, we think you're busy enough, we, we understand. Thank you very much. The board and I had an opportunity to go to the library on the day where, just before we turned over, I guess, the keys to the contractor and we did a groundbreaking ceremony and it was pretty exhilarating and exciting to, to see where it's going. So thank you very much for all your hard work, the staff, thank them as well, and all of the volunteers. Thank you, Swadish. Yes, thank you. Gosh, can we, can we give Camille a mic? How much does a mic cost? Let's buy Camille a mic.
First of all, I wanna congratulate all the re-elected and re-appointed individuals and welcome back trustee Lang. And for all the taxpayers, I have somewhat good news. Since December 31st falls on a weekend, you may pay your taxes on January 2nd. But if you come in on January 3rd, you're paying 5% more. No exceptions. Happy holidays, everybody.
I think she should do a comedy show, take it on the road. Thanks, Camille.
That was great.
Oh, my gosh. Gary?
I just, I just wanna congratulate you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Josh and Danny and look forward to working with everyone the upcoming year. And if anyone wants to sneak up and take a picture, now's the time.
David?
Thank you. Just wanna say congratulations, Mayor and Dino, trustee Gachon and welcome back, trustee Lang. Looking forward to working with you in the new year. I want to say thank you as well in regards to this library project. You know, six weeks ago, when we awarded the bid or the, the board awarded the bid, there was a lot of work to do. This library's been there a long time and there was a lot of stuff there, right? The library staff worked amazing to kind of take out decades of books and coordinate movers and pack up their lives to go upstairs. So Elaine Swadish, led by Swadish, Elaine, Miriam, Justin, they just did an amazing job kind of taking their whole life and moving it upstairs. In regards to the actual physical kind of taking away shelves and moving furniture upstairs and the big, heavy stuff, led by Elliot Maldadato, Mark Salvati and Johnny Reichel, also Rocco Fiore, helped quite a bit. They moved an amazing amount of furniture upstairs, amount of equipment upstairs. They just, they did an amazing amount of job deconstructing bookcases and shelving and putting them upstairs. So I just wanna say, you know, a special thank you to everyone that made that happen. It was a short timeframe and they did just, you know, they just did an amazing job. So thank you to kind of everyone and even the DPW crew and everybody else, they did a lot of work in regards to this project. So just kind of a big thank you because it was a lot going on in a short amount of time. Other than that, just, you know, happy holidays and that's it.
Thank you, Gary. John, do you have anything that you'd like to go over? No, okay. All right, so that concludes the departmental report and I'd like to have a motion for a village board meeting. There's no motion needed, sorry. Just, um, do you need something? No, 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 he didn't. You can take some, you can take some later, later. Getting distracted here. So the next village board meeting is on January 8th at 7:00 PM. Carter, come over here, disruptive meetings. No, 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 not yet. May I have, we'll, we'll get to the Board of Trustee member reports. Trustee Lang, if there's anything you'd like to add? I know you don't have reports quite yet.
Right, well, I'm extremely excited. I'll be reporting on the beautification committee, the community center. And also, I'll be getting some information with TYA and the Eastchester Recreation Department. I currently sit on the advisory board, so I'll be forwarding us some information with the Eastchester Recreation. One thing I just wanna throw out there was, so the walking bridge has been installed at Tuckahoe Lake and it's been a long time coming. You guys might wanna get over there and check it out. And special thanks for Jane, to James Nolan for pushing that project along, thank you very much.
Okay. Trustee Gachon?
Thank you, Mayor. So the historical preservation committee is hard at work as well as the Tuckahoe History Committee. You heard Nick's report today, the history committee meets between 9:30 and 12 on Wednesdays. I have my office hours during that time and I spend half that time kind of bothering Nick and everybody here. And you learn something really cool about Tuckahoe every single time that you come in. So come in, bother them, they'll put you to work, but it's, it's good work here. So not surprisingly, the Tuckahoe History Committee Facebook post that garnered the most interaction for last month was about the late, great Alice White. For our veterans, December 7th, VFW Post 2285 held tribute to those fallen in Pearl Harbor. It's been 82 years and there was a moving ceremony at Lake Isle. My lovely two-year-old gave me pink eye, so I could not attend. But I heard that it was a fantastic ceremony and I'm, I'm sorry that I missed it. Senator Shelley Mayer is holding a holiday breakfast for the Veterans Advisory Council and meeting on December 18th at 8:30 in her White Plains office. Any veteran is welcome, come on in. If you have any issues New York statewide, this is a great time to kind of come and, and bring those issues to that committee. And I saw Commissioner... And I saw Commissioner Anthony Laurie come in. And I just want to congratulate him on his 50 years as a volunteer firefighter. We all know that he is a veteran belonging to VFW Post 2285 and the American Legion Post 979. So congratulations on your 50 years of service. I did that one on time. The beautification committee this past weekend had pictures with Santa. The Gachion family was there in full effect and I know a lot of you were there as well. It was a really, really nice event. Some of the volunteers obviously were Sue Chimera, Loretta Sorencion, Jerry Calo, Mary Licio, Megan Kennedy, Frank DiMarco, Danielle Forgione, Angela Bocetti and Frank Petrovotis. I did not pronounce that last one right, but it was a great event. It's always a good event. You start to see some of the beautiful decorations around Tuckahoe. And they've also gotten, you know, a bunch of letters to you about all the, the good work they do and the, the hard work that they're doing with the DPW. So we have those here. And that's all I have.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Hi, everybody again. From the Tuckahoe Planning Board, they will meet on Tuesday, November 19th. The work session was canceled on the 5th, so they'll have their work session at 6 o'clock and the planning board meeting itself is at 7:00. There are a few items on the agenda. 20 Marble Dale Road is an amended site plan to expand an existing business. 108 Sagamore Road is a returning, is a returning item for a retaining wall. 225 Marble Dale Road is a return for a parking lot replacement and new retaining wall. That's the Verizon, right, yeah. And there is also a, oh, yes, on Marble Dale Road, there is a new yoga studio applying for site plan. So that, that is interesting. Sorry. Just also, last month, we had 64 Main Street went up for a special use permit at, and that is a new restaurant called Bahama Taco. So it's a 38-seat restaurant and bar. So that got approved last month and that's pretty exciting. So we'll have a new restaurant coming soon to Main Street. The zoning board is adjourned for this month, so they will not be meeting. The seniors are having their annual holiday luncheon this Thursday at Melino's at 12:00 PM. Sign up already happened, but they will also be having their in-house luncheon on the 21st. So anybody who would like to attend that should reach out to Lisa Jones. I'd like to take a moment to congratulate resident Adrian Michelle. Adrian Michelle has been working diligently. She, she's worked with the Westchester Business Council. She has created an app. And so, you know, some of our residents are doing amazing things and I think it's really important to honor what they're doing. She created an app that is, allows for safety for both police officers and motorists during traffic safety stops. And so when a motorist is stopped by a police officer, they can upload all their documents, their license, their registration, their insurance to this app. And so that, that information can get safely transmitted to the police officer. So the police officer is safely able to get that information without having to have like a contentious interaction. And so this is now available on both Google and Apple's App Store. And it's something that you might want to take a look at and download onto your phone and just get some more information about. So this is, it's called Safe Stop Mobile. Safe Stop Mobile, should check it out. And congratulations to Ms. Michelle because I think that's like a really incredible thing. And that was with the Westchester Business Council that she was able to do that.
Maybe we'll ask her to come one day and present on it.
So we did have some losses in the village that I just want to recognize. We have three residents that passed away recently. Adam Calvo on Lawrence Avenue, Catherine Tierney, who is a long-term resident, and Lauren Marks of Underhill Street, Lauren Marks Bailey of Underhill Street. So condolences to their families. I want to just take a moment to thank John Galuzzi for his incredible work at Winterfest. It is one of the cornerstones of our village and like a very highly anticipated event with Santa Claus and, and the fire truck and the train, the children really love it and the carolers. And it's a really fun experience. So just thank you, John, for all the hard work. You know, it really is, it's a wonderful thing that he does for us in the village. So just give him a thank you when you see him. And again, I just want to reiterate what everyone has said about the library staff. That is Yau Man's work that you have all done and we are incredibly grateful. I know that this will be difficult, this transition, but what will come will be so worth it. So with that, I just want to take a moment to wish everybody a very happy and healthy holiday season, a happy New Year. I know that the state of affairs in the world is a little rough and it's sometimes a little difficult to, to hear the news. But it's a really important time for us to remember that we live in a wonderful place where we are all very lucky to be here, right? It's, we have a beautiful home, supported by a wonderful beautification committee and a wonderful village and great people that we, great neighbors, great police department. We are all very lucky to be here and just take a moment to sit and, and just thank whoever it is that you thank for what we have in front of us. And I want to just thank you all for taking your time to sit here and be here with us. And I hope that the year ahead of you is wonderful and merry and bright. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, deputy mayor. I want to also add to the, to the, the thank yous and I want to thank John Sullivan. Our village administrator was away during the Winterfest and John Sullivan really stepped up and just jumped right in there and, and helped John Galuzzi make some decisions about things during that, that event that John Galuzzi would normally rely on the village administrator. So it's just great to see new people coming in and contributing to the life of our village. I also want to, you know, acknowledge and thank our deputy clerk who's here, Jackie Ferretti, who stayed. She, she was ill for a few days and she came and to spend some time with us today. And our treasurer as well, Ryan Ruetta. And they, they both do such a great job in the village. People come to Village Hall and, and often tell me how great the people here are and how hospitable and helpful. So thank you both for your hard work and for being here with us during this meeting. I, we appreciate you. For those of you who were at the retired chief, John Costanzo's retirement party, the village board presented him with the first marble award in Tuckahoe. And I thought it was fitting since Nick, since you talked a lot about the, the wonderful marble in Tuckahoe and where it's gone and where it's, where it is. I want to inform the residents that in January, we will be giving him the official marble award with, that's going to include some of Tuckahoe's marble in it. And we're hoping that this becomes a tradition for years and decades to come in Tuckahoe, where the residents nominate, you know, their neighbors to receive the marble award. And so we're working on some logistics around criteria and who can be nominated. But I thought, we thought that it was fitting for the chief of police, who retired after 40 years of serving this community, to receive the first marble award. He's not here, but congratulations again, John Costanzo. And we are, I am looking forward to in the coming year, putting out information for nominations to be submitted to the board for consideration because I think the marble award is a pretty cool thing. So give you guys more information on that as we get closer to it. I want to thank some young people. The Cottle School came to visit and they brought me a thank you card that they, with all their pictures, their favorite part of coming to visit the mayor was banging the gavel, of course. So I want to read their card. It says, "Dear Mayor Andino, thank you for taking time out of your busy day to share your office with us. We enjoyed learning about the village. It was cool to hit the gavel. We liked the tour of your office and meeting you. We had a great time. Love, Class 2V, as in Victor. Thank you all so much. For this card, I will cherish it." And I got to know a few of those students who I think have a career in politics at some point in life. I also want to thank Sophia, who left me a little note. I don't know exactly who Sophia is, but thank you, Sophia, if you're watching. She sends me a Merry Christmas wish and says she hopes I have a very Merry Christmas. And our Troop 2642 made me a nice little ornament that I will put on my tree. So, you know, when I first ran for office, one of my motivations for running was to get young people feeling like they are closer to their civic involvement. And part of that is just sometimes just coming into Village Hall and meeting the staff and meeting the mayor and going down to the police department and hearing what they do. And I think that we can all, every single person that's sitting here and that's watching, inspire young people to pursue service in some capacity. It doesn't have to be in politics. And so this is really very important to me to make sure that we stay connected with the young people and that we show them firsthand what it looks like to serve. So thank you to all the young people who, you know, gave me that back. I also want to congratulate Officer Kennedy and his wife, Megan. Congratulations on baby Jack, who was born recently. I was just talking to one, one of the police officers and said, you know, I'm really glad that the men who work in our police department also now have parental leave, which is something new in their contract. So I think Detective Leone was the first one to benefit from having parental leave before it was just maternity leave. And when the board heard, when we were negotiating the contract, that only the female officers got time off, we thought, how can that be? So we made sure that the, all of the officers have the same amount of time off and that fathers are also able to spend time with their, with their children. So I'm very happy for them and congratulations to them. An update on ECAP. The ECAP has not had an in-person MLK breakfast for some time after COVID. It is returning. So many of you may have gotten the notice. It says the MLK breakfast is back on January 15th. We will have the president of Westchester Community College as the keynote speaker for that day. We will be honoring with the community service award, the Asbury United Methodist Church in, right down the street, where is that, Yonkers? With the community service award as well as Son of Tuckahoe, Max Pierce, for his social justice award. Max is beloved in the village and he is a Harlem Globetrotter. And more importantly, he is a lover of humanity. And so he does a lot of artwork around social justice issues. And his, his artwork will actually be hanging at some point. We are working out logistics at the Westchester Community, Westchester County Center. So he'll be inducted into the Hall of Fame there. So congratulations to Max for that. The deputy mayor and I had the honor of attending the EVAC Annual Awards Dinner, which was, you know, not quite what I expected. It was really a beautiful event. We had, there were several award recipients there for a number of calls. Remind me how many there were? 14? 14? Yeah, there were 14 honorees. And it was just a really a beautiful event. So congratulations to all the honorees at the EVAC Annual Awards Dinner. Also, we attended the Westchester Senior Hall of Fame, Citizens Hall of Fame. And Jennifer Vetromile received that award last week. And the deputy mayor and I attended, along with Jackie Ferretti. And it was just a really beautiful event. I think there were almost 1,000 people there. And, you know, Jennifer has done so much. She's retired from working with the seniors, but she's given so much to the seniors and to this community. And she was honored as one of the Hall of Fame inductees for the Westchester senior citizens. So congratulations to Jennifer Vetromile for that. Okay, and short-term rental. So we talked a little bit about short-term rentals. The last meeting, we asked people to weigh in. Our village attorney is working on a proposed legislation. In January, we will set the public hearing for February so that you can all weigh in once you get some information on the legislation that we may be proposing. And I'm encouraging residents to please weigh in on what you think works for this community. If you don't weigh in and then later on you don't like it, then it's, you know, it's really difficult for the board to be able to include your input unless you give it to us. So we're really encouraging you, giving you a lot of notice. We will have a public hearing in February, but we'll have the legislation that we propose out and it'll be on the website for you to look at and to weigh in on. Okay? And then the last thing I want to go over, our board liaison assignments. So at the reorg meetings, when we have changes, and sometimes when we don't, people may want to do other things and be liaisons to different committees. So this will also be on the website, but I would like to just let everyone know. I am, I will be the liaison to the Tuckahoe Schools, to ECAP and to the Chamber of Commerce. Deputy Mayor Cronin will be the liaison to the Planning Board, Zoning, Sign and Honing Board, the Seniors Program and Special Events. You know, she's the creepy candy crawl queen. And trustee Engelbert will be the liaison to the Eastchester Schools, the Library and the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee. Trustee Gachion will be the liaison to the History Committee, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Veterans and the Tuckahoe Housing Authority. And trustee Lang will be the liaison to the Beautification Association, as he mentioned, and the Community Center. So you have a, a working board that has assignments and that is connected to the community. So if you have any questions about any of the particular committees, feel free to contact the liaison for that committee. You're obviously more than welcome to call me, but oftentimes when you do, you'll notice that I'll refer you to the liaison because we want this to be a, a board that's all working together. It is not just any one person and it's not about any one of us. So that is our December meeting. I want to wish everyone a happy holiday, a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, however you celebrate it. I, I hope that you have peace and love within your home and with your family and that we show some peace and love to each other. Is there anything else that you guys want to? So this, this brings us to the second opportunity to address the board. No, no, no. It's.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
I'm so glad to be here. In my church, they have a song that says, "So glad to be in the service one more time." So I'm delighted to be here. And I want to congratulate the newly constructed board and tell you that if you do as well as the ones who were just before you, you have no problem because I am so proud of what this board has done over the last few years. Congratulations to you. And my most happy reason for being here tonight is to congratulate the beautification and the DPW Department for the lights in Tuckahoe. First though, if you have not seen the trees lighting, the trees that are lit in the village square, a depot square and the tree, you've missed it. I am so proud of it. I'm there all the time. The merchants love it, the people love it, the people getting off the train talk about it. Congratulations and thank you. And finally, if you live in Tuckahoe, get to Fairview and Main Street. After the traffic is, the buses and trucks are gone. And just look down at the candy cane lights on Main Street. Iconic Main Street for the United States of America is here in our beloved Tuckahoe. God bless all of us.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
First of all, congratulations to all of you who've been elected. I wish you lots of luck and happy holidays for everything. I just wanted to come here to say thank you to you and the board. Saturday night, we had a, an event that the fire department bestowed on me as honorary chief for serving 50 years. And trustee Gachion, Gachioni presented me with a proclamation. And he didn't read it because he was having such a good time. So I read it when I got home and I'm here to say I truly appreciate it. So I read it when I got home, and I'm here to say I truly appreciate it. It was very thoughtful of all of you to give that to me, and I just wish everyone was able to come. But again, thank you so much and happy holidays.
Sorry we couldn't make it. I, I... Sorry I couldn't make it. I, I had a prior engagement that I tried to, to, to get, get out of, and that didn't work out. But congratulations. Anyone else would like to address the board? No one?
Samantha, St. Peter Main Street. And as part of the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee, we're hosting a Kwanzaa Poetry Night on December 27th. It will be at the community center at 6:30 PM. So everybody come and, and enjoy it. And I also want to just say happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, happy winter solstice, happy Human Light Day, Human Secular Holiday, Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, happy new year, and hope everybody's, the quality of life continues to improve for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I love the new applause that goes on here. Anyone else would like to address the board or have any comments or announcements? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. So Tuckahoe, have a good night. We will see you on January 8th. Happy new year. Please be safe and have fun.